I'm gonna call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand to salute the nation's flag. In attendance tonight are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Savavik, and Fleer. In addition Township Manager Don Januso, Jack King, Director of Planning and Assistant Township Manager, Shawn Bukowinski, Chief of Police, Bill Waldorf, Director of Public Works, Fire, uh, he's not here, Engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and Township Solicitor Gretchen Moore. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General Township comments or questions will be addressed after the Board of Supervisors' discussion of old business. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Leaf collection will contin- I'm sorry, nobody, one last time. Leaf collection will continue until Wednesday, November 24th. Leaves will be picked up Monday through Thursday during this period. Bagged leaves are to be placed out in biodegradable bags. Loose leaves must be raked to the curb. The Cecil Township Historical Society will meet on Wednesday, November 17th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the meeting room of the Municipal Building. Following CDC guidelines, masks are recommended but not required. The municipal offices will be closed on Thursday, November 11th, 2021, in observance of Veterans Day holiday. Normal business hours will resume on Friday, November 12th, 2021, at 8:00 AM. The municipal offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 25th and 26th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Normal business hours will resume at 8:00 AM on Monday, November 29th, 2021. Seventeenth Annual Toys for Tots Drive through Toys, I'm sorry, Toys for Tots Drive will be on Saturday, December 4th, 2021, at 9:00 AM to noon at the Cecil Township Public Works Garage. Bring a new unwrapped toy valued at $5 or greater. Monetary donations are accepted. Make checks payable to the Greater Washington Toys for Tots. This year's Toys for Tots will be in honor of, in honor of and memory of former Chief Bill Cass. If you notice, tonight's agenda is a little different than in the past. In the past, we would have had new business and old business at the end. This time, because we've listened to the residents and to the board members who've complained about not having enough time to really think through some agenda items, we're gonna start with discussion items. These are items that will be discussed amongst our board, or presentations will be made by our township professionals. But there will be no formal vote taken on any of these items this evening. So if you have any comments or questions about them, please feel free, you know, as you're recognized by the Chair, to ask those questions. But there will be no formal vote taken on any of those. After we get through those discussion items, we'll then move on to resolutions, which those are items that will, there will be a formal vote taken on. Yep?
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. Tonight, on the discussion items, I think I'm gonna handle a couple of those. We have some guests also. So, for the first item, if the board recalls, we were back here, we were here, I believe, in July to make a presentation to the board regarding the public works facility. As a result of that meeting, you asked us to do some things. So, in the audience tonight is Kevin Nadalin, he's the Project Manager for the building from our office, our architect Eric Lynn from LLI, and Jamie White, the President of LLI, he's also here, he's a Hickory guy, so he was right down the road. So, they're here tonight to, if you have any questions, I'm just gonna give you a brief on what's happened since July. The board asked us to do a number of different things. So, the first thing I'm gonna call up is the rendering of the site. This is Klinger Road. As you recall, we're making this big flat pad. In fact, we had the meeting on Friday with Mike Stewart to start the work, and we had a pre-construction meeting, so Mike is, can be on his way to actually clearing this site and getting ready to just start the grading up here. And this is the first piece of the site to be developed. This would be the public works building. And what the board had asked us to do, we'll talk a little bit about the building in a minute, but first thing you asked us to do was get correct solar orientation on the building. So if you recall, there was a different layout before, but we've rotated the building. So now you'll drive in off of Klinger Road. You can make a left-hand turn. It actually works out very well. These will be the offices here, shown in white, that you can park if you have, or you're working in the building, you want to enter the building. The administrative offices are gonna be in here. The fabrication shop, and then the mechanics garages will be on this end of the building. And then this is the big long bay to hold all the equipment. So, we got the reorientation of the site as the board had asked us to do. The second thing the board asked us to do was to go back and really pin down the floor plan of the building. This is a colored version of it. And what's, what's happened, and I'll summarize this in a minute, is that the architects have optimized the size of this garage building. When we started out with this, we were at about 29,000 square feet. It's been reduced down to about 26,000 square feet in total. And that includes this piece of red right here, the blue, and the green. This would all be the storage area for the building, for the trucks. So that was a big savings. They tightened things up just a little bit after talking to public works, to Bill and how they could park the vehicles and the type of vehicles. So we skinny'd that down somewhat. The second thing that happened to the building was, this piece here is the, where the trucks will be worked on. There's a pit here for, for working on vehicles where the guys can get down in the pit. And then there'll be the ability for some lifts in these two bays as you move from the left to, or from the right to the left. So this piece, this corner piece right here is all the place where the trucks will be worked on. And then, the other part of the public works operation is a fabrication shop. This fabrication shop has been adjusted in size also. And then finally, the office sizes have been optimized downward to make sure that there was no redundant space or anything extra that would be looked at. So, in summary... Should just go up the PDF. So in summary, the footprint was reviewed for maximum efficiency. The office went from 3,400 square feet down to 2,650 square feet. The fab shop went from 2,100 square feet down to 1,910 square feet. And the mechanic shop was reduced from 4,600 to 4,000. So, that alone in savings of square footage based upon the average cost that it will be for each element of this construction caught about 340,000 in the building. So I think we accomplished what the board wanted us to do in terms of optimization of the, of the building itself. And then, as we said before, the garage was reduced from 29,500 down to 26,350. That was a reduction of 3,150 square feet, and that has a value of about 400,000. So between those two different items, you know, we've, again, tried to pay attention to cost, understanding, you know, that we wanna build something here for the future, but we don't wanna overdo anything. So I think we've accomplished that. So, the plan would be to still bid the garage with a base size of about 20,000 square feet with two add-ons, just to make sure that we stay within budget and there's still an opportunity to pick and choose. But the optimal size would be this 26,350. So, that's the, that's the summary. I guess at that point, I'll just stop and ask if the board has any questions.
Quick question. How many vehicles did we say we had that last time we were discussing this? Bill, do you know offhand? All right. They'll all fit inside?
This building is way too small. You got all the paving equipment's gonna be sitting outside. You're gonna have bobcats sitting outside. You're gonna have a ceiling that you seal the joints with, sitting outside. I mean, why are we building a building that's too small? We're gonna have a lot of equipment sitting outside. You're gonna, you're gonna have two bacchus, right? Yeah, and your high lift, and your paver, and two bobcats.
Ron, the long-term plan is to put up pole buildings that wouldn't be heated for additional equipment. But again, we're, you know, we're just trying to get off the ground. There's plenty of room, the master, this, this just shows the minimum, but there's the ability to put in pole buildings in this direction. Again, that's, that's what I'm seeing most people do. I mean, you want, you wanna keep your vehicles that your guys are gonna use, your salt trucks, your high-end cost vehicles in a heated space. And then you would keep any other equipment that you just wanna keep out of the elements to keep it in unheated pole buildings with just electricity in it. Is the, you know, that's, that's the best spend of your money that way. So, Bill, I think this accomplishes, the base bid accomplishes getting the trucks all inside, which is most important. And you'll still have the existing public works garage. The things that you're not using every day, you could use that facility until such time as... Till you move on to a future phase.
So if I understand what you're saying, essentially, this is almost like a Phase 1. So this would be Phase 1, and then the future plan would be additional storage as we can afford it and it becomes needed.
Right.
Bill, when you're talking about the equipment that might be outside, or Ron was talking about it, was that assuming that we don't take the optional bids on the bigger space?
We're still, we're still gonna have some equipment outside.
No matter which...
We can't pull that only to pick it up to get everything inside. And quite frankly, there's no need to do that. Some of that equipment is well-stored outside in the unheated facility. As long as it's undercover, and actually not exposed to the elements, that's the really, that's the damage, is being exposed to the elements. You know what I mean? So, off-season equipment such as the paver, the craft co-machine, the crack ceiling machine, the windy four hundreds that we use for leaf pickup, those can all be stored in auxiliary storage, out away from the heated facility. What we're trying to do is accommodate the equipment that we use that are critical to our operation, because, you know, of course, I think winter operations is the most important thing that we do as a department. And we wanna make sure that that equipment's inside and ready to go, that we're able to work on it and store it in a ready condition. This facility here will allow us to do that. It allows us to bring that plow in, drop it in front of the truck in its own bay, or keep it on the truck within the bay. If we end night operations at midnight and I'm called, expect to call the guys back out at 5:00 in the morning, that truck sits there with the plow still attached to it. All they have to do is come in and report, do the pre-check on the truck, and then it's ready to go out of the garage and back to the service. So, currently, what we have to do to get the equipment in the garage is to drop the plow and then put it back on again when we call back out. Many times, we come back out and four or five hours later, in time to beat the morning rush to clear the roads for the rest. So, I mean, we're looking at this right now, doesn't, doesn't satisfy the needs we have as a department currently. It does indeed. And is there an opportunity to expand the building down the road as the community and the department develops? Absolutely. So, we're confident that this, this is gonna work for us right now.
I also, I don't agree with how big the fab shop is. We're not a fabricating company. It's almost, it's almost 2,000 square feet.
We save a lot of money.
Yeah, but you don't need that big. That's a, that's a big area, 2,000 square feet for a fab shop.
We have, Ron, there's gonna be an overhead crane in there that we can lift stuff up.
That's way down the road.
We're doing it right now, Ron.
They're expensive as hell.
We put the front loader bucket off the, off the thing, and flipped it over and re-skinned the bottom off. That bucket would've cost not, probably $10,000 to replace. We spent $800 in hard ox to replace the material. We just wanted to be safe. We're capable of doing that work. We just need a safe condition to do that work in.
There's obviously nothing for the board to do tonight, but if, the next logical steps on, on the plan, if the board is in agreement with the current floor plan that's been presented to you tonight. The project needs put in condition for bidding. I mean, all we have is a floor plan right now. There's, there's more work that needs to be done to put the final plans together, develop the plumbing contract, electrical and mechanical contracts. If this project was bid, it would be bid with four prime contracts, with the general contractor being responsible for coordination of the other three. This is typical for any type, building-type project in Pennsylvania that asks to be publicly bid. This is the way you do it. The general contractor would be responsible for buying the steel building. And then, we would look to put alternate bids in the package for upsizing of the garage. We would try to plan for a future truck wash that could be attached to the building. We could even take bids for the salt storage building that... And even if none of these are built, we would still have an idea, be prepared for any add-ons in the future, again, planning for the future, and to have budget numbers to work with. So, there was, there was a lot of things that we wanted to accomplish here. Again, the goal is only to build the building that we showed you tonight. But if we're out looking at this thing, it might be prudent to at least get the numbers. Bill and I talked about it, to have for future budgets, or at least know what, what future planning would be for the, you know, to bring everything here in total at some point in time. And then, lastly, if the board is in agreement with the footprint. We've been holding off on final utility preparations. We've got numbers to the utility companies. They have to approve the loading and so forth. I mean, there's power that needs to be brought up here. Have to get the sanitary sewer in, gotta get the water line in. So, that's in another part of a contract that actually needs to be put out for bidding at a, at a future date. To, to, if, you know, if you're in agreement to build the building, we have to bring utilities into it. So, they're just the next steps. Again, nothing is being asked for tonight. Just wanted to bring the board back up to date.
You said a reduction of the 300, or 400,000 and another 340,000. What does that put our totals at?
The building's still, I mean, again, the building price is in the range of around 5 million. So we don't know until we take bids, Eric. I mean, it is a volatile situation out there related to bids. I was just talking to Jamie White before, before the meeting, and there's some things that are done with steel. I mean, we might come back to the board and say, put concrete block up instead, depending upon what the price of steel is. So, we've not gotten into that. Once we get further into the design and actually get a better cost estimate, we'll be able to further refine that and bring that back to the board before we actually put it out the bid. I know contractors are hungry, but the problem is the materials are, you know, in demand. That's, everybody knows that. So, timing on this and when, when we put it to bid is, is critical. And, you know, I know we've been waiting for this for a long time. It's just unfortunate that the situation is, but you just have to deal with it. We've got good prices on the, on the, on doing the site work, so take it piece by piece.
If there's no more questions by the board, we can move on to the next. Coleman Road, Coomer Road, and Anger Road.
Sure. So, the board asked at the, at the discussion on the capital budget to come back and at least talk about some projects that might or could be advanced here in short order to take care of some things that are out there. They're kinda low-hanging fruit, if you wanna call it that. The first one you recall is up on Coleman Road. We have a little bit of a, of a breakaway of a portion of the road that's just below the last retaining wall. There needs to be about 45 feet of this wall constructed in this direction to deal with this situation where the, where we've lost some support of the road. The number on that is around $90,000 to get that work completed. It could be very quickly put out the bid. You could take bids from, from contractors that you always already have under contract to get a number. It's kind of a situation where we are blocking part of the road. I would consider it pretty important to get this one done quickly. So this was the first one. The second one was Anger Road. If you recall, on Anger Road, let me see if I can rotate this.
Rotate clockwise.
There we go. Ah, upside down now. Have to rotate it again.
One more time.
One more time. Okay, great. So this is the picture of Anger Road. This is the project that the board, we did this year. If you recall, we put a culvert pipe in here on, on this property. Were able to, instead of building a retaining wall, we were able to put a slope in here to stabilize this. The last part of the project has not been completed yet. We did a walkthrough with the contractor that's out there. We do have a slight issue with some of the water escaping off in this direction and creating a little bit of an erosion situation. We were planning to do some work along this road anyhow. So this, this poor portion of the area that's in black would be reconstructed because it's been beaten up by the slide that occurred on the road. So this would be rebuilt. The proposal is to put an inlet in right here to take care of this little bit of water. There's just a little bit of a low area here right at this point that, it's a low point. Feel that this is the best way to correct it. And then to repave this lane about 100 feet, mill it and repave it. Again, put this catch basin in and a short piece of pipe, and that'll button this project up. Just as a summary of the project, the original contract price was about $150,000. There was a deduct in there for the air bridge. The air bridge was, they were supposed to build it to get over the gas line. They were able to get it in a different direction, so they gave us a deduct on that. And then if you recall, we decided to move the project a little bit further down and do a little bit more filling in this area, 'cause we were able to. And it was, this area had moved just a little bit more since the time that, that we had had the project out the bid. So there was additional work done there. The price of the inlet in the pipe they gave us, we feel, was a fair cost. And for the milling and the paving, it was 16,900. That would bring the total project cost to 171,945, including the, including the deduct. I just mentioned that the wall price that we bid previous to doing this was at 332,000. So, again, even with these minor improvements, we're still well under the cost. And I would just ask the board's authorization to, to proceed with getting this work done.
Well, tonight, it's 'cause it's under discussion item, it will have to wait until next month to be...
Sure, I'm sorry, yeah. I, I, it's under contract, I mean, you could add it to the agenda. So it doesn't have to be big. It's, it's, it's up to you what you wanna do. I follow what you're saying.
Well, we can't...
I have a question.
Well, I guess I could have to open it up to public comment.
Yeah, what you're saying would be no new expenditure of funds. Right.
No, there would be new expenditure of funds.
There would be expenditure of funds, but it's, but it's under contract already.
You're in an existing contract, but, yeah, but you're still...
I would say no. I would say we have to wait until December to add it as an agenda item.
I have a question. Is that a, is that a wedge curb you would be putting there to stop that erosion?
Yeah, they would, they would guide the water down here. They would mill and repave this and put a wedge curb to carry the water.
And is that the, just half the road, the whole road? Or I see the state doing a lot of those, one quarter of the road.
Half the road, full lane.
Full, one full lane, half the road.
Twelve-foot wide by 100 feet, yes.
Okay. So the state was doing a lot of that, just the quarter roads, building berms and curbs and, you know, taking care of the edge of the road. But how's the rest of the road? It's decent?
It's not, it's not bad. I, and this was the piece that we wanted to address.
First, the anger was done by the developer.
Yeah, it's, it's not that old. It's, it's less than 10 years old.
If there is interest of the board tonight, we could take a vote to add this, 'cause there's that new Sunshine Law Act. We'd have to take a vote to add it to the agenda, and then we could vote on the items. If we're in a hurry to get any one of these done, we could do that. Thoughts?
I'd like to add that this is sort of a time-sensitive matter here, because we're starting to run out of page this evening.
All three of them?
No, no, just this, this particular page and project right here.
Yeah, Anger would be the one to get done.
If we wait until December, maybe too late, we may not have the time, because the plants will shut down shortly after that, I believe. Right, Frank?
Is a majority of the board in favor of adding Anger Road to the agenda tonight for a vote?
Yes.
Eric, Ron?
Yeah.
Frank, okay. So we'll add that to the end of the agenda. Anger Road.
But I'd also like to mention too, that even for just the building itself, we're not asking to go to, to go to bid on it yet. We're just asking to get some drawings ready so that they can be ready to go to bid.
For Anger Road?
No, 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 for the public works building.
Oh, right, right.
That's, like I said, that's another whole stuff. If we wait another month just to authorize him to do the drawings, we can at least be ready for, for them to go out to bid, and we can finish our budget with that. I mean, we need to know how those bids are gonna come in for our budget.
But even if...
Just have an idea on it.
Even if he does the drawings, though, we have a budget meeting. You're not gonna finish a drawing, Dan, by November 8th.
We're not gonna get bids in that fast.
Oh, no, not by November.
But like, but we're actively working on our budget now. I don't think there's any way that we would be able to get it done by then anyway, so why rush? I mean, it will definitely be on the December agenda, but I don't think there's any way to get that for our budget. So I'm gonna add 196, 2021, consider, I don't wanna say awarding, 'cause it's not a bid, but...
This would be adding, the, the, consider adding...
Adding Anger Road to the Youngblood contract.
It took to Jetjack.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jetjack. Anger Road Repair to Jetjack. And we'll vote, take a vote on that contract. Before we do that, though, I wanna open that up for public comment. Does anybody have any public comment on that agenda item that was just added? Okay, there will be a formal vote at the end of the meeting on that. Okay.
And the last item that, that's sort of on the critical list, and this, we're not able to do anything this year, but is to widen out that stretch of Coomer Road. As I showed you last meeting with the pictures, the idea would be to create a flat area up here near the top of the road, widen this out a bit, and be able to make up some of this, this gradient. I would have to put a pipe across here, would make some, some grade adjustments working from this stretch up to Muse Bishop Road. So this one, I would just say that we'll try to get this ready and have this, the ability to do this in the early spring. So this is, you know, ready to go. The price tag on this was about 240,000 to do this. I think it's a little high, but we have to take bids and see, see what the number is, actually. We're able to make it up with this grading, no walls required, but there would be some reconstruction of the road and installation of this pipe. So I just wanted to show you this is...
On this one, we're gonna be required, when you were talking about buying property?
I, I think, Ron, all we'd need is a little bit of a slope easement off of this property over, owner over here. So it doesn't look like we'd even have to do that at this point. I mean, long-term, as I showed you on that plan to sort of widen around and make this the way it should be... sort of widen around and, and make this the way it should be. Um, you know, we could, we could hook back up here in the future. But for the short term, near term, I think this is, this is the way to go.
May I ask, what's the width of that road right now? Or the way you have it right there, the new part?
It, it'll be wide enough. It'll be a standard, like a township standard road, which is a twenty-two feet.
I just wondered if that throat or the, uh.
Oh, up through, up through the top here?
I wondered if that could be a little.
This is, this is widened all the way as we can within reason. We have some guide rail along here too.
And on the inside? If someone was coming down, making a radiant turn?
Yes, this would be adjusted here too, Eric. This is, th- this is a little fillet in here. You can't see it, but that, that's what the radius, the, the road currently comes up right here. And this is where it would be widened to.
I just thought even more a big truck making a turn on that road.
I mean, we'll get, this is a, this is a concept plan. Once we finalize something a little bit further. This was just done to put an estimate together. We'll, we'll, we'll get it as wide as we can. So those were the three projects that, uh, that Bill and I saw that were on the radar screen uh, to get, at least get some action going and, and get them moving. So we can work with the board next month on authorization on the other two, if you want to proceed on those.
Okay.
Did you make, did you, uh, go visit the on-road bridges that, you know, like, drove that way recently and saw three others besides the one that you did inspect? I didn't realize there was three there, but.
I'll, I'll defer to, I'll defer to Bill on the, on the on-road bridges. I think we're okay on the, what Eric's talking about, Bill, was the, the bridges that are beyond, uh, the tradition, traditions of America headed back over towards Morganza.
Right.
I don't, I mean, those.
One lane bridge and, uh.
I think they're all.
They've been inspected recently or?
No, it's not in the MBIS inventory.
They're not in the.
They're not even bridges by PennDOT's account.
I think by standards, that's right.
Yeah.
It has to be greater than twenty people that left in order to be concerned with.
Well, if one goes down, it still would cause a tremendous inconvenience. I don't know. I would just recommend they be looked at or?
Well, we keep an eye on, uh, from a maintenance perspective, we've done remedial, uh, repairs on those things. Just, uh, you know, the problem with two of the structures, they're, they're pipe cullits and there's not, uh, formal end walls or head walls on either structure. So they're both subject to, uh, severe sc- scarred conditions during flooding events.
Right.
With that being said, we're always down there, uh, the debris out and making sure that, uh, the structures themselves haven't been compromised. So, yeah, they're challenging.
So the first one, the one lane bridge is, is not pipes, but that's a structure?
Yes. Yes, that's, that's correct.
But not twenty-foot?
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take a break and, uh, ask the guys from Ironwood Drive to come up. Uh, they have a request to the board.
Good evening. Excuse me. My, my name is Rich Miller. I'm a resident at two thirteen Woodridge Court, Cannonsburg, PA, one five three one seven. I'm also here tonight as vice president of our neighborhood HOA, which is the Ironwood Wedgewood Homeowners Association. I'm here tonight with Bernie Shaughnessy. I'm here tonight with Bernie Shaughnessy, who's also a resident at two oh three Woodridge Court, Cannonsburg. Bernie acts as the, uh, current president of the HOA. And I'm also here tonight with Brian Fishback. Brian is the professional engineer with Mack and Engineering and Consultants. His company is located at one oh three Technology Drive, Pittsburgh, PA, one five two seven five.
Sorry about that.
No problem. So our request tonight is for a application for traffic signal approval. Or more specifically, a flashing warning device permit application. Uh, the Ironwood Wedgewood HOA engaged Mack and Engineering to prepare a two-sheet permit, uh, plan and a one-page application for submission to Cecil Township for their processing and subsequent submission to PennDOT District Number Eleven for approval of two devices. These devices are to be solar powered radar speed signs located on both sides of Ironwood Drive. The permit has been prepared in accordance with PennDOT Publication one forty-nine, which is the Traffic Signal Design Handbook. Issuance of the final permit will be sought upon completion of installation of both devices. The formal application for the traffic signal approval was submitted to Cecil Township on or about August eighteenth of two thousand twenty-one. So what's the, what's the reason for our request? Well.
Safety.
Uh, we oftentimes use the slogan in our neighborhood communications, slow down for us. So this request is being made to remind our neighbors, their family members, delivery drivers, utility workers, contractors and all others to be mindful of our children at play and to maintain a safe speed. It has been shown that most speeding on residential streets is caused by people who actually live in the same neighborhood. So these solar powered devices are to remind everyone to drive with care on our streets. It's likely that a child is at play nearby even if unseen. So we need to share our streets with one another so that we can all enjoy the neighborhood. So what are the requirements? Well, our understanding are there's three requirements. First requirement was to attend tonight's meeting, uh, the regular monthly meeting with Cecil Township Board of Supervisors and to make a formal request. Second requirement, the approval for construction and maintenance would require a legal agreement between the township and our HOA. We acknowledge this requirement, including that the cost of the agreement and the review by the township solicitor would be borne by the HOA who's proposing the installation. And then thirdly, the HOA further acknowledges that the installation of these devices is planned within the existing fifty-foot right-of-way. Further approval for the device locations will be secured in writing from the appropriate landowners. You might ask, what are the estimated costs? Uh, to our, the best of our knowledge, it's at twenty thousand. We budgeted seven thousand for engineering, six thousand for the devices, five thousand for the construction or installation and two thousand for legal. Have we considered other alternatives? Yes. In fact, we've been corresponding with the township about traffic calming and safety concerns for the last few years, dating back to December two thousand nineteen, which is when the phase two of the Ironwood development took place. Added volume, traffic volume became noticeable at that point. We've also been involved with Cecil Township Police Department. We even delivered electronic radar speed signs, which seemed effective while operated, but these were only being done on a temporary installation, maybe a one or two week period at a time. The HOA also evaluated several different types of traffic calming devices. We looked at poured asphalt speed bumps. We looked at modern traffic devices like recycled rubber and recycled plastic for speed bumps, speed humps and speed cushions. These products were all cost-effective but less attractive and less accommodating for emergency vehicles, snow removal equipment and for, uh, school bus routes. So in summary, uh, we believe time for action is now. We followed the PennDOT handbook regarding the three Es. E for educating. We tried to educate our neighbors through, through correspondence, uh, through emails and, 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 and public meetings. E for enforcement, we worked with the local police department, trying to get people to slow down. And now we're at the third E, which is engineering and the reason why we hired Mack and Engineering to, to lay out a plan for us. The HOA is trying to be proactive in avoiding an accident and any associated liability. And while this is not the most cost-effective way, this is the best alternative solution to our safety concerns. It may not eliminate one hundred percent of our problem, but we believe it will certainly help. And finally, I just want to reacknowledge, all current and future costs will be the responsibility of the Ironwood Wedgewood HOA and not Cecil Township. So with that in mind, we can certainly take some questions. Uh, we did submit the application and multiple copies along with the engineering drawings and so forth.
With, with all due respect, I'm actually going to stop you for a second. I'm going to ask, so this is not, so this section of the agenda is really for our professionals. What you're asking for is a resident request. So I'm actually going to ask you to hang with me till we get through the professional stuff and to get through the agendas. And then you, you can come back up during the public comments because we wouldn't let just any, like, we wouldn't let every resident add on to the agenda like that. So I don't want to seem like we're giving you favoritism. Does that make sense? So if you could just give us a few minutes to get through our discussion, our agenda items, then you can come back up and we'll talk about it. Cause there's no formal vote that can happen on this tonight anyways. Make sense?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so we're going to move on to the review and acceptance of roads in the overlook phases four to seven.
Cindy, we still had one or two. Yeah, exactly.
Uh, I just wanted to bring the board up to date on the overlook.
This plan's been around for a while. They've been working pretty diligently to address all the punch list items, including installation of sidewalks, handicap ramps, uh, and they're getting that work complete. Uh, we've been out on a number of different occasions to look at the punch list with them. They did some, uh, final wearing course paving in some of the sections. So if the board's aware, this is the main entrance, uh, to the, um, overlook development. Uh, the roads that are not colored have already been accepted. That would be phases one through three. The remaining roads that will be back in front of you for consideration for acceptance are phases four, shown in yellow, which include the roundabout, uh, phase five, shown in red. And then phase six, shown in blue, and finally phase seven, shown in green. Uh, phase six is the one that connects out to Burnside Road if that connection's already made. So again, a lot of, uh, a lot of additional roads. Uh, we're not sure when they're going to be ready. We won't bring it to you unless everything is ready, but we just wanted to get this out in front of you to let you know it was coming. That's it.
Thank you.
Uh, the next one, uh, that is the, um, the Cecil Township Municipal Authority Project, uh, sort of came and hit Jack and I in the head real quick here. They're making an application to be on the planning commission agenda. I just wanted to show you the site here real quick. So, uh, this is Georgetown Road. If you're not familiar with this site, uh, this is the road that goes back to the Robinson property back here where the slate dump was. Uh, Charters Creek is right down here at this section. Uh, the railroad passes through here. So the authority is actually, uh, taken by adverse possession. I believe about maybe an acre and a half here to build this, uh, treatment plant for Lawrence. So, uh, this is going to be in front of you next month on the land development. Just wanted to bring it to your attention. Uh, they did ask Jack for a letter to support the PennVest grant, which I think he's given them or, um, and, uh, just, again, just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. Nothing fancy here. These are the tanks. There's a small building here. It's pretty far off of Georgetown Road. I don't think anybody will even know it's here. We'll know when the town's ripped up to put the sores in though. Lastly, the, uh, French Club. A- as the board's aware, emergency, this building had to be taken down. This is just a picture of the remaining rubble. Dawn and I talked about it. Uh, this actually needs put to bid to get this material hauled away. Uh, and just some general conversations that I had on the environmental side of this thing. This material will need landfill, uh, because there was no asbestos report, uh, done before this building came down. So you have to treat it like it's hot. Um, that's preliminary indications. We haven't gotten a final determination. The foundation should be okay. Uh, but, but again, all of these bricks, wood debris and stuff is going to need to be hauled out of here to a landfill.
Can we do that after the fact or no? And we just have to treat it like it has asbestos?
You have to treat it because it's fallen. There's no way to, you can't, you just can't get inside and it's fully evaluated. I mean, the number, the budget number is about sixty thousand to haul this away to a landfill.
Didn't we get a bid that was less than, or didn't we get someone that said they had a general interest that was less than that though?
Thousand is the general interest.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I mean, we can put it to bid. Dawn and I just putting out a basic spec. We just want to put it out for, for, for bid, uh, to be, to be done, but, uh, I just.
And the property will be leaned after for the amount of the, for the cost. The cost to actually take it down in that emergency was what, forty-eight hundred?
Less than five thousand dollars.
That's what I thought.
I think that concludes the, uh, discussion items.
Thanks, Dan.
So the roof was leaking and that forced the roof to push out the walls and why it had to be?
It, it just, it just started to load upon itself from what I understood.
It was open to the elements for too long. The wood beams and so forth that held things up were, and the sides started to crack.
Do we still have that drone footage?
It was, it was in peril.
Eric, if you want, uh, chief, one of our officers flew with a Sean McNaughton. Sean McNaughton flew the drone above it that evening, um, so that we had videos and pictures of what had happened. You could get with chief and see that. So you can actually see for yourself.
I just wanted to let the residents know.
It was bad. Um, any other questions before we move on to resolutions? Okay. One seventy-five twenty twenty-one, consider reapproval of application twenty twenty, oh, oh, twenty-eight for McConnell's Trails Phase Two B subdivision plan as recommended by the Township Engineer. Location McConnell's Trails Development along Francis Lane and Dogwood Lane, R two medium density residential zoning district applicant McConnell's Trails LLC. The plan received Board of Supervisors approval on September eighth, twenty twenty and must be reap- reapproved for recording purposes.
Yeah, this is a recorded plan. I'm sorry. I don't have a copy, but I don't know why I don't.
This is a reapproval of phase two B. You already approved it. The signatures are, are too old right now to record it. So this is just a reapproval of phase two B. Uh, everything's bonded. Everything's in place. Everything else is in place that it needs to be, to be recorded. Uh, but that's the, uh, that's the request tonight to put it back on the agenda for, that's why it's back on the agenda tonight.
Do I have a motion? I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass this five zero. One seventy-six twenty twenty-one, consider application twenty twenty-one, oh, oh, twenty-three for McConnell's Trails Phase Three A subdivision plan. Location McConnell's Trails Development along Dong, Dogwood Lane, Magnolia Court and White Oak Way. R two medium density residential zoning district applicant McConnell's Trails LLC. The planning commission recommended approval of this plan on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, contingent upon addressing comments from the Township Engineer.
Yeah, all our comments have been addressed. This is for twenty-eight, some of the family law, I'd say you have townhouses. If you recall, they were into the board to discuss the reapproval of phase three A with the conditions that the board had outlined, uh, that there be stipulations related to the improvements uh, to carry, uh, this plan to Burnside Road, uh, which was completed, uh, within a certain time period, which is, uh, I believe next spring. And then the, uh, improvements to, uh, McConnell Road, uh, which would be completed, uh, one year following, uh, that. And, uh, we actually have notes on the recorded plan to reflect what the board requested. We got the, uh, the actual wording from Carol from the agenda. So that's going to be on the plan. The plan's not going to be recorded tonight though. You're just giving approval of phase three A. Uh, they, they're going to actually build this with, uh,
They, they're going to actually build this with, without, without recording the plan yet, correct? Yeah. So, hopefully we'll get it recorded before the time runs out again. So, so that's, that's the plan. This is, so, so the board, you had delayed the approval of this plan because we were awaiting the decision related to the changes in the conditions, so now that that's in place, that's why Three A is on the agenda.
We, we didn't approve it, right? We, we said that, if I remember correctly, I wanted it, the road open all the way to Burnside, to eliminate some of the traffic on McConnell.
Right. Yeah, they, they came in and requested the change in conditions last month, and you guys gave them the okay on the change in the conditions, and we did it with a timing that it's not based upon, it's not based upon the construction of Three B, it will be completed by next spring. Next fall.
I don't remember any of that, do you?
Yeah, I do. I remember reading. Do I have a motion for one seventy-six, twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One seventy-seven.
Excuse me, I had one question about this before you move on. Dan, years ago, whenever the nine eleven system went into effect, it was mandated, we had to rename all the streets in the township to comply with the, the standards for the nine-one-one system statewide.
Right.
We'd eliminate a lot of the street names that, like, like duplicates, like, there was a lot of first streets in the villages, things like that. We were also directed on, on streets that, or driveways that had like two homes on it, to call, to call them lanes, L-A-N-E, to designate for the, for the nine eleven, nine-one-one, or the emergency providers, that that's a private road, and there might be one or two houses out there. So, at the time, or whoever was doing the work for us designated all those, those private areas as, as lanes. Now, I mean, there's a couple of Dogwood Lane here, I, I don't know if that's, if, I just had forgotten about that, about Dogwood Lane here, and there's another one, Francis Lane. Are, are, are we, we getting away from that, that policy that we required at the time to, this is gonna be a public street, and yet it's gonna be designated as a lane, and is that gonna conflict with anything that we were required to back then? It's been so long, I can't remember that.
Yeah, Liz actually, before, when a road name comes in, it actually goes to the post office for approval, we hand to nine-one-one before they approve it.
But the, the post office had nothing to do with designating private drives as lanes?
No, but, but, but nine-one-one is, you know, the, the post office cares, too. I know that she goes through that process. I understand what you're saying, lane was private?
Yeah.
And street was public.
Right.
I, I don't know that that got passed on, we can get back on to that.
Well, I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was a requirement, but I can't remember, I just wanted to point that out, point that out, just in case, that I, I don't, I don't wanna go against something that we were required back then, and we followed all along.
Right. I, I know that we do check on every street name, that we do check, but I'll ask Liz about that tomorrow, when we get a note back out to the board.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom, for bringing that up. One seventy-seven, twenty twenty-one, consider setting the date and time for a public hearing regarding the proposed twenty twenty-one sign ordinance. Hold my calendar.
That's gonna be kinda short. Do we have anything else that has, that we can combine and get one good evening out of it?
Well, we're gonna have to work on the international fire code, I just don't know how, when we get to that, I don't know how. Let's hang on to one seventy-seven, and when we...
Or do it a half hour before next month's meeting? Would that work?
No, I was, plus we have a bunch of stuff going on in November, anyway.
I'm just saying the timing...
So do you just wanna do thirty minutes prior to our next meeting? Alright. So we'll do six, why, why don't we say, alright, we'll say six-thirty on twelve-six? Is that, that's the date of our next meeting, right?
Yeah, that's more than thirty days on that of work.
Yeah.
But I, just in case something else comes up where we need to have another, schedule another day, maybe we can, combining them, so we'll keep it out for that.
Yeah, if we get to the international fire code and there's a desire. Okay. But right now, though, it's scheduled twelve-six, at six-thirty. One seventy-eight, twenty twenty-one, consider pay application number three in the amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars to Thornbury Inc. for work to date on the Ridgewood Bridge, Ridgewood Drive Bridge. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One seventy-nine, twenty twenty-one, consider pay application number one in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and fifteen cents to Young Blood Paving for work to date on contract A of the twenty twenty-one pavement, pavement maintenance program. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One eighty, twenty twenty-one, consider pay application number one in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred dollars and fifty cents to Young Blood Paving for work to date on contract B of the twenty twenty-one pavement maintenance program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have a question, is there a balance on these?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, these are, this is just pay application number one. So they have work still yet to do.
How much work left, Dan? Seems like we're running later in the year on this road program, I'm sure.
Yeah, maybe I could ask Bill, since Joe's not here tonight. They had a meeting with him last week, and...
Yeah, we had construction status three last Thursday, met with Jack Wine, who's a representative of Young Blood, and he laid out their, their scheduling and their sequence room, and work performance. Today, they were up on Elm Drive, they've completed work on Vista, I believe the only thing they have left over there is sealing the centerline, gutter line, that'll wrap that project up over there. Over on Elm Drive, they were milling today and tomorrow, the profile of the road, that road was in cure because we did face stabilization up there. The plan is to place binder Wednesday, Thursday, and possibly place the wearing course Friday and Saturday, Saturday, that would wrap up Elm Drive. We also, we also discussed last Thursday with Jack, the work remaining on Wilson, they still have some drainage work to do. The plan was to move in today with their drainage crew. They were delayed because of the rain last week on another project, so that got pushed once that's completed. And Wilson, there's not a, a lot of drainage work down there, but, I mean, it has to be done prior to the, the basic repair of paving, and then the only other road we still have to address is Ridgewood, and we'll have to coordinate that with Thornbury, with their work operation over there. They've already set the inlets under Young Blood's contract, it's available, that has to be set to tie those two inlets in, and an end wall also. So the plan is to work with Thornbury to get them in there, get that work done prior to them finishing their guide rail work over there, because we don't wanna pull that, and then we'll see where we're at. We think there's enough time to get that work done also. That runs from Bel Air down to the bridge, but it's about three hundred feet of pavement work that we have to do. That's where we're at with Young Blood right now.
Thanks, Bill.
They should all get done, Bill?
We expect them to, yes. There were some delays then receiving some pipe products also. We're having some issues with, like, interstate pipe right now. They have certain sizes available, not all sizes available, I know, so, there's delays right now in materials, across the board, not just groceries, but in construction materials.
Thanks, Phil. One eighty-one, twenty twenty-one, consider pay application number five in the amount of fifty-one thousand ninety-six dollars and eighty cents to Traffic Control and Engineering Company for work completed on the Green Light Go adaptive signal upgrades to be paid from grant funds and SPO contributions. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five zero. One eighty-two, twenty twenty-one, consider, consider the thirteenth release of financial security posted for the installation of public and private improvements for McConnell's Trails Phase One from four hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred ten dollars and ninety-five cents to three hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred thirty dollars and ninety-five cents, a total reduction of ninety-nine thousand four hundred and eighty dollars as recommended by the Township Engineer. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, Dan, is, is there a breakdown on the public and the private on that, or is that all public?
It's all public, Tom.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One eighty-three, twenty twenty-one, consider the second release of financial security posted for the installation of public and private improvements for McConnell's Trails Phase Two A from two hundred six, I'm sorry, two hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars to one hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty cents, a total reduction of one hundred two thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents as recommended by the Township Engineer.
Tom, on, on this one, there are public and private improvements, it's all mixed together, I mean, we only accept the public improvements that they're on the bond, it's all, all, all part of the same, if that makes sense.
It does, but do we know the breakdown, you know, for our purposes?
Oh, we will, we'll, we'll only, I mean, when we get a maintenance bond, we take a maintenance bond on the public improvements, correct? But for the, as we work through the process, we just pay them for work done to date on whatever that item is, and we retain fifteen percent until everything is done.
And their bond still, it's, it's complete for, but, so it's coming out of the same pot of their, their same, what they put, one escrow for, all of that?
Correct.
Alright, okay. They've been used to, we used to...
Used to segregate them, but it's just, it's just always one now.
Is keeping fifteen percent enough? Is that enough? Should that be enough?
Andy thinks it's too much. I, no, what, what, my, my, my rule of thumb, I mean, technically, you, you could pay down more, but, like, the whole fifteen percent, because that's the amount of the maintenance bond required them to furnish. By law, it's fifteen percent for eighteen months. That's what the MPC says, so we don't go below fifteen percent until we're ready to final out. That's, whether it's right or wrong, that's my policy.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One eighty-four, twenty twenty-one, consider the acceptance of the public improvements for streets in the Windsor Woods Development Phase Six A and Six B to include portions of Sir James Drive and Sir Charles Drive as recommended by the Township Engineer. Dan, that, those issues on, was it Sir James that's been taken care of?
Yeah, let me bring the board up to date on a couple of things. Since, since the last meeting, there's been multiple things going on at this plan. Everything related to the acceptance of the public, public improvements is in order. Unfortunately, as this project was developed, there was some extra land that was acquired, which is shown here on this plan. There was about nine tenths of an acre that was added to the plan to double load this street. When that happened, the developer's engineer didn't expand the limit of disturbance on his permit, so these lots are technically outside the boundary of the plan, that, that's one issue. The second issue is, I met out here with the residents that live at these properties here last week to, to review this plan. This is the corrective action plan for the development, and that is to properly grade these lots, which were not properly graded by the home builder to carry the water that falls, generally that comes in this direction to get it down in its natural place where it needs to be over the hill. This water's building and actually creating a, a bit of a lake down here in this direction, and it needs to be cut off at multiple locations as shown on the plan. This corrective action plan has been accepted by the builder, they're gonna take care of it. Again, I met with the property owners, I think I have them understanding that the public improvements related to these lots are different than the private improvements, but nonetheless, I went back to the developer who's here in the audience tonight, if you have any questions, and asked him to post security to assure that this plan happens. So, he's agreed to keep his performance bond in place for the amount of thirty thousand dollars to complete this plan and to assure that the pond is finalized out in the development for this phase of the development. So I think we have security to assure that this plan's gonna be completed. I also noticed when I was out on my side inspection that there's two homes that are not, that don't have occupancy permits yet, so I've instructed Liz already not to issue those occupancy permits until we make sure that the grading is completed and that we get an inspection on the, on the final restoration up there. So, that's the big explanation of all what's going on here. Otherwise, the public improvements, like I said, are, are all in order. I don't know if any of the residents are here tonight from the, from the development, but I, I gave them a copy of the plan, and I told them that we would be here tonight. I think they, they understood what we were doing tonight.
You, you said this water, that water's gonna dump over the hill?
Yeah, that was my question, too.
Who's it gonna dump on? Because I know, well, you know, Dan, that one house got flooded up there because of...
All of, all of the roof drains for these homes are all tied into the storm sewer in the front. This is this backyard drainage that, that flows naturally down through here, Ron.
What's down below that?
Uh, this is just a natural water course. So there's no impervious that's flowing down here, it's, again, it's just, it's this grassed area that's flowing down in this direction. And this, this has to be approved by the, again, by the, it's into the state for, for corrective action. So, if the state requires something else, I guess, you know, that, that they'll be required to do something else. They can't finalize their pond and everything else, so, again, I feel that there's ample security, even if there's something else that has to be done here, or somebody wants something else done, but I looked at it in the field myself, and the minor amount of water that's coming off just of these lots, that's flowing through the backyard and naturally floated through here before, anyway, it's just, it got, it got channelized all the way down here instead of coming off in different directions as it, as it did before.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Is there a second? I'll second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One eighty-five, twenty twenty-one, consider the full release of the remaining financial security posted for the installation of public and private improvements for Windsor Woods Development Six A in the amount of seventy-nine thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars as recommended by the Township Engineer.
Yeah, and this is the phase of the development that's not including the drainage. The next one, hold, retains the funds for the bonding, is that explained to the board? So this one's a full release of Six A, Six B, we're still holding back money for the drainage work.
That's the thirty thousand?
Correct. That's your next, the next one for you to vote on.
I make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. One eighty-six, twenty twenty-one, consider the fourth release of financial security posted for the installation of public and private improvements for Windsor Woods Development Phase Six B from two hundred three thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty cents to thirty thousand dollars, a total reduction of one hundred seventy-three thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty cents as recommended by the Township Engineer.
Dan, that, that, technically, the, the builders committed to fixing the problem that they created themselves, it's not necessarily gonna be this, out of this thirty thousand dollars. Right, if the builder does what he's supposed to do, then this can just be released as, as due course.
Yes, sir. I am the developer of Windsor Woods, and it wasn't our fault, we told Dan Ryan Holmes what they had to do, they said they would do it, they didn't do it, so I'm going to guarantee the municipality that it's done properly. We submitted the plan already to the Conservation District, we met with the Conservation District twice, we know what has to be done. Dan Ryan Holmes said that they would do it, but if they don't, I'll do it myself, and then we'll come back and get the release of the bonds when we're completed.
So it's gonna be re-rated and planted, and...
Yes.
Yes, and the plans have already been submitted to the Conservation District for their review, based on what they recommended we do, what Dan Ryan does when they met in this field.
What's the timeframe on when will this be accomplished?
Soon as the Conservation District gives us the go-ahead, it'll be done immediately. It's not a lot of work. It just has to be done, so.
And it's probably gonna be springtime till it's vegetated, and we're still gonna hold this money till next spring anyway.
The big thing was, it was remedial work that the Conservation District let Dan Ryan Holmes do immediately. And that was done immediately, um, to remedy most of the situation, but it has to be finalized within the
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you for agreeing to do, to back up that work. Uh, one eighty-seven, twenty-two, and one, consider the repeal of the twenty fifteen international fire code. Um, before we actually take a vote on this, I just wanna remind you that part of the reason, first of all, repealing this doesn't actually repeal the international fire code until we actually take an action to repeal the ordinance itself. It basically is just, you know, notification of the intent to repeal it. We'll need to repeal and replace it with something. Um, but the, we adopted the twenty fifteen international fire code in its entirety without really making sure that it matched our U D O, and we've had several inconsistencies with our U D O. So I, Dawn and I both spoke to Chief Mack, and he has agreed to take on going through the international fire code and working with other municipalities and seeing what parts apply to Cecil Township. And then repealing what we enacted and replacing it with something that's more, yeah, that's better and more applicable to the township.
So doesn't the, doesn't the changes, won't that, don't you just, can't you just leave it in place until?
It will.
Those revisions?
It remains in place. This isn't, because it's an actual ordinance, we, doing this doesn't actually repeal it. It's just kind of letting the public know, hey, we recognize that there's stuff that's wrong. We're gonna take action to fix it, and we're gonna, once those changes, once we agree to whatever those changes will be, then we'll have to make an ordinance change in order to re, formally repeal.
Be a hearing too, for that amended, uh,
Ordinance, cause it's an ordinance, yeah, for sure.
We're not setting ourselves up for regression, are we, by repealing this?
No, I think what I heard is you, you want to actually tailor this to be more specific to Cecil and avoid some of the inconsistencies that we've seen over the years. There are a couple I know I've, I've brought to your attention as well. Um, so you're gonna go through it and basically pick and choose the ones that are most applicable and make the most sense for your township, um, which is what most municipalities do. Um, I think you all have just a, a wholesale adoption of it, um, and that's caused some issues over the years.
So it's been moved. I'll second it. Is there, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, I have spoken with Chief Mack. I think the intent is to have something to be able to present to us in December. Keep in mind, it is an ordinance change, so there will require a hearing, but as we're working through this process. One eighty-eight, twenty twenty-one, consider setting the date for a public rezoning hearing regarding application twenty twenty-one oh thirty-three for Silver Creek Housing Development. The Planning Commission recommended denial of this plan on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Um, this was a little bit, Dan, I guess I have a question for you. So we're setting a hearing for rezoning, but they were supposed to come back in September and do a presentation for us, and they canceled it.
Yeah, Mr. Seedorf's here from Miranda Homes. I, I asked him to be here tonight, just so we're all on the same page. So with, it's the board's request before you set the zoning, um, the hearing for the rezoning to actually come in and go over the plan again?
Yeah, so like, that was my understanding, is we had, and I, I think it was in September. I think you came to us in August, or you came to us in September or something, and then you were, two weeks later, we were supposed to have a presentation, a public hearing where the public was invited, or not a public hearing, but like a public presentation to discuss the plan, and then at your request, or I assume it was your request, at the request of the applicant, that meeting was canceled.
Yes, that's, excuse me, that's correct. Um, we had a few meetings, uh, internally and with a few members of Cecil Township. And what we decided and figured would be the most expedient and, and logical way would be to, uh, you know, cancel that and just go in for the rezoning, uh, application, which is what we did and, uh, was with the planning commission last month.
So my preference would be, and I'm one board member, is that we go back and have that meeting, because I understand that you met with internal township staff and, and some board members. I wasn't present at that meeting, but I think the public has a right to kind of hear what that plan was. So I, my preference would be before we set a rezoning hearing, that we set a public meeting, maybe sometime in the beginning of December, to hear what the actual plan is, and then, and we can set the rezoning hearing after that.
Okay, so just to clarify, you, you want to see, uh, the P R D plan opposed to the cluster plan?
Yeah.
Public hearing prior to the, the public hearing for the
Yeah, because I think we've, I mean, I, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I think we've established that the cluster plan doesn't match, doesn't meet the requirements of our cluster development ordinance.
It does meet the requirements, um, the bulk requirements. Um, it just doesn't meet, in my opinion, and yours, uh, from last meeting is the vision of a cluster.
Correct.
So if, if that's, uh, if that's what the board chooses to do and requests to do, then we will, we will do that.
Yeah, so let's set a hearing to hear your P R D plan for, or not a hearing, a meeting to hear your P R D plan first.
Wait a minute, though.
Go ahead.
During that last, the, the regular hearing, the, the understanding was they were gonna present a new plan for the cluster development that more met the, the, the vision of a cluster plan. It, that, that's what the, they're, they initially agreed to redo. Then the discussion came up about why, why, why isn't it just rezoned to R two so that they could do a P R D? So, and, and I'm not against having that meeting to go over a P R D, but initially, they says they could readjust, make some adjustments on that proposed, um, uh, cluster development plan. Well, isn't that correct?
But it's my understanding from, and correct me if I'm wrong, though, you can't meet the vision of the cluster development.
Yeah, based on topography and just the shape of the property, it, it just, it does not meet your vision of a cluster, uh, housing development. You know, for instance, you want to, uh, ingress and egress, main entrances, that, that just cannot happen.
That was gonna be the same for the P R D. That wasn't the point. The issue was, uh, that you, you says you might be able to do some different layouts i- in, in there, and, um, i- if, if you can't, I hadn't heard that yet. I just knew the discussion went right to, uh, rezoning for a P R D. I didn't know, you said you looked at it and if you think it's not gonna work, I understand that, but we hadn't officially heard that yet.
Well, that, that is the case.
Alright, okay.
Yeah, that's what I understood. So, but, and also, to be clear, I am curious why the Planning Commission recommended denial.
Uh, the Planning Commission's opinion was, you know, was a three to two vote that it should, that they didn't see that it should, it should, they thought it should remain as R one, or or be something else. They talked about other possibilities there, given its location.
Okay. Given its location to the Turnpike?
Yes.
Okay.
What's our timeframe, uh, on, on the application?
Yeah, that's a good question.
There, there is none on the rezoning. Remember, this is just legislative, so, um, we ever changed the U D O, remember we had discussions about changing the U D O, about making it more clear about what the process would be for a rezoning application? So if that's the case, again, it's not quasi judicial, just legislative, then, um, I'll check your U D O, but as it's currently written, I don't think that
How long do you think it would, you would need to do a presentation on the P R D?
Couple weeks?
No, I meant like actual timeframe during like an hour, thirty minutes.
Oh, yeah, within an hour.
So I was think, so, Tom, we could lump those together. We could lump the sign ordinance and
Before a meeting?
No, do them as like, instead of doing a, the sign ordinance before a meeting, do the sign ordinance and this is a separate meeting.
Yeah, I think that there might be residents who wanna talk, and so, yeah, we can have planned that before immediately.
So why don't, I hate to, cause of, cause of the Thanksgiving holiday, could we do it December, Monday, December thirteenth? I hate to push it that far, but that's, I feel like that's all we could do.
I'm available.
Alright, is that okay? Okay, so we'll do that, and we'll change our sign ordinance to that night too. So instead of doing December sixth, we're gonna do the sign ordinance and the P R D plan for this, December thirteenth at seven. Thank you. Yeah, sign ordinance first, and then
Do that in the motion, form of the motion, just?
Yeah, sure. Is, do I have a motion for that? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One eighty-nine, twenty twenty-one, consider the hiring of Jeff Huesman Junior as a mechanic with the Public Works Department at a rate based on their contract. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One ninety, twenty twenty-one, consider the hiring of Susan Severns as part-time building custodian at an hourly rate of fifteen dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a, moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass is five zero. One ninety-one, twenty twenty-one, consider award of a three-year contract beginning in January of twenty twenty-two to Chem Oil Company for delivery of diesel, if you want gasoline, at a price of point zero four seven per gallon above the base opus rate. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Discussion?
Sure.
Discussion?
I said sure.
Huh?
I said sure.
What is it usually, or how does that deviate from what forty-seven cent?
Currently, right now, it's point zero five.
Pardon me?
I, I'm sorry. Right now, it's point zero four nine.
Is our current?
Is our current contract, that's right.
How much does that fluctuate ever?
Well, it fluctuates with the opus price. The, I mean, that's what the fixed margin is. The opus prices is the price reporting index for the Petroleum Institute that gives you the price of fuel per, the rack brand price per day. And all they do is include that markup, so we're getting the rack price with their less than five cent markup on each gallon.
No matter what it goes, whether it drops or
Right.
That's, that's the only way that we're able to bid fuel contracts. It's been like that for twenty years.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. One ninety-two, twenty twenty-one, consider appointing Bruce Gazvota to the Agricultural Security Area Committee as a farming community member.
So moved.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. One ninety-three, twenty twenty-one, consider appointing Jack King to the Agricultural Security Area Committee as a non-farming community member.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. One ninety-four, twenty twenty-one, consider the Board of Supervisors' regular monthly minutes from Monday, October fourth, twenty twenty-one, Cecil Township Board of Supervisors' regular monthly meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One ninety, I'm sorry.
Good job, Carol.
One ninety-five, twenty twenty-one, consider the general fund invoices from October first through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's what I was gonna do. That's, yeah, I was gonna Well, we voted to add it before, but I can do it, you, as a separate line item. Okay, so we're gonna do one ninety-six twen, so we're gonna take a formal vote to add one ninety-six, twenty twenty-one, which is consider adding anger road repair to jet jack contract. Are we okay with adding it? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass is five zero. So now we need to take a formal vote on the actual agenda item, which is one ninety-six, twenty twenty-one. Consider adding anger road repair to the jet jack contract. Do I have a motion?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Wait, you said that was twenty, twenty-one?
One ninety-six, twenty twenty-one. I just added a number.
You said twenty, twenty-one for the, okay, down to the agenda.
It doesn't, does, that, that doesn't need an agenda. Alright, alright, we'll make this one ninety-seven.
Add an A.
Okay. Okay, one ninety-six, one ninety-seven, twenty twenty-one, consider adding. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Stain.
Four and one abstention. Uh, before we move on to citizens' general comments and questions, any board comments?
We waiting to entertain Ironwood again.
Oh, I was gonna ask, have them come up first under public comment. Anybody else? Alright, guys, sorry about that. Just general board procedure that we have citizens, questions, and comments and requests at the end. You don't have to go through your whole presentation again, we'll save you.
Comments or questions? Again, we have our professional engineer here as well.
So, so I'll just, I'll just comment that, uh, these, these types of devices, the reason why they're here in front of the board is, number one, they're putting it in your right of way, and Pendot requires any type of device like this to be owned by the township. So, that, that the board, that, if, if you consider this and you wanna, if you wanna follow through with their request tonight, there would be a future agenda item, uh, authorizing the township to sign the agreements that need to be put in place to make this all happen. Uh, it's not unusual, I mean, speed devices are one thing, but now Pendot makes us like, if you're in the state right of way, nobody in a private, can own a private pipe in a state right of way. Pendot makes the private end, or makes the municipality take over the pipe in the right of way. So it's, it, I'm, I'm drawing the same analogy. We usually have third-party agreements whereby the pipe is in the right of way and they perpetually maintain it. It, you technically own it, but, but the township does, but, but it's perpetually maintained by the private property owner by agreement. So I guess this is the same thing that, I mean, it's, it's kind of analogous in that they're gonna, they're offering to pay to put it in, pay to maintain it, um, have the agreement in place. The only thing in effect is the township officially owns it. That's, that's really, if I can summarize it. So it, it is precedent setting. You might get other people to want, to, that would, want to come and do that, this. But again, I, 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 I just know that, I, I think these speed devices are effective. I'll just give you my general comments, because when you see that device every day and it reminds you how fast you're going in a neighborhood, which is twenty-five, people are going faster than that, and yeah, I, I, I'm sure they are. So, I, I don't, I don't think it's that bad of a precedent, as long as, again, somebody else is going to maintain it. Uh, but again, that's a board decision. That's just my, my, my opinion.
Keep in mind, there's no formal vote that's gonna be taken on this tonight, so you, as board members, can ask questions, but we're not gonna give you our opinion until it's a specific agenda item, which at the earliest would happen next month.
And I do have one question. When you mentioned it's gonna be in a fifty-foot right of way, but you said you'd be responsible for getting any extra property? What did you, I thought you said
If required, there's two landowners that, uh, we're talking about, and if required, if we need to provide anything in writing from them, we're prepared to do that.
It's gonna go in front of somebody's house.
Uh, it's on their lot, not necessarily
Like right on the lot line, right?
I'd be curious, like you said speeding was a significant issue. I've, have you come to former, previous board meetings? Like, I'd be curious to see the communication and the amount of speeding that's actually taking place on the street.
As I stated earlier, I think some of our discussions started with Dawn, December two thousand nineteen, which was about the timing of when the Ironwood Phase Two development was completed. And that, that added about thirty-five homes to the existing seventy-one or seventy-two homes. So there was a noticeable increase in the traffic volume at that point in time, which is, I think, about the point we started, uh, discussions with Dawn. Again, we've, uh, we've had the benefit of, uh, working with the township police and putting up temporary devices. Again, those seem to be very effective, but once they're taken off the property, then we're back to the, the old habits again.
I, I, I was told by a certain policeman that about eighty percent of people speeding are people from Ironwood.
Well, that's, I mentioned that earlier. The bulk majority of the people are
I'm just I'd be interested to see some sort of study or something, though, cause I am curious whether or not this is gonna be effective, because if you're speeding, like, there are roads that are cut-throughs where it's not always the same group of people cutting through, and so I think something like that may be effective. I am curious, though, if the majority of the people speeding in your neighborhood are in fact residents who live there, because you're not cutting through Ironwood to get anywhere else, if they would, if it would really be a deterrent.
if they would, if it would really be a deterrent.
Well, I'd ask you to rely on your engineer, who just stated a moment ago that he believes that it is effective. Township police have temporary devices that they, they tow to other neighborhoods. So I gotta believe if the township.
I'm sorry, but I don't believe, people even pay attention to them.
Yeah, we use it.
I've seen so many people, and Sean has moved that thing around quite a bit.
We use it.
Right lane ends on fifty and everything. People don't even slow down. They don't pay attention to it. They're just immune to them.
We use it.
I mean, Bob has one in front of his house. And I'd like to see a picture of how big his thing is and everything.
We've provided drawings of the size and so forth.
Understand, though, when we put up this speed trailer, like, we have the ability to track and almost do a study, so we can see, like, speeding. He said, this is precedent-setting for us. So if we allow you to do it on Ironwood, then we would essentially have to allow anybody on any township road to do that. And I think that's something this board really needs to consider before we just say yes.
I'll go back to my initial point. This is a safety matter. I would think that this is something that you would wanna consider. It's not a setting precedence. I think it's a matter of preventing an accident. If we're willing to pick up the cost of permitting, engineering, construction, let us use our neighborhood as that, that test pilot.
Could be setting a good precedent.
I'm sorry.
Could be setting a good precedent.
Correct.
We, we are after the health, safety, and welfare of the residents, and that is our job function. I see the, those used in Peters, but I wonder if they were set up by the school over there. I see them by certain schools and things, but have you seen that, the solar panels with the flashing lights?
I've seen them in Peters Township.
They're becoming more popular, more and more. I travel all throughout Westfarn, Pennsylvania, paving various neighborhoods. They're plopping up in Collier Township, Upper St. Clair. He's become a more popper. I'd be an advocate for him.
Are there any residents against this project in the?
We, we had a vote among the seventy-one existing homeowners in the initial neighborhood. Roughly two-thirds of the vote came, came back in favor of it.
I, I, if I'm being honest, I'm concerned, though, that there are neighborhoods and streets in the township that can't afford to bear that cost on themselves. So is it, is it right to allow, and, and we, I don't know how I'm gonna vote. I have to think about it. But like, is it right to allow you guys to do it because you can afford to bear that cost? But there are other streets where we know speeding is an issue and we're working to curb it, that maybe is more, speeding's more prevalent and a bigger issue than, say, your road, and, and we're still working on those things. That's, that's my concern. Because I will tell you speeding is a problem across the township. And so, and I can tell you, I know for sure that most residents can't afford to, and most HOAs cannot afford to bear that cost. So I, I do worry a little bit about that.
If it works, then it wasn't necessary that police have to.
And they shouldn't be penalized, I believe, because they can't afford it.
Sean, what's your opinion of this?
I'm actually not really familiar with the devices permanently being in the neighborhoods. But unfortunately, the trailers, they do stay up, and after a while, people do not pay attention to them. And the nice thing about our trailers is that you can actually get the amount of cars, what time, what time the violations are occurring. So I don't really have any data on Ironwood, so I, I can't really say whether or not there's even an issue over there. It is very difficult for us to sit there. Of course, you know that. The, we need sight distance. There's no sight distance on that road. And violation speeds, and I stress to the board, just because it's twenty-five, and they can be going thirty-five. So unfortunately, that is the difficult thing, to slow cars down. But I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're looking out for everyone to slow down and be cautious because there are kids over there, so. But I don't have any data on that.
Frank mentioned a lot of municipalities. Could you check with some of the chiefs and see if maybe they've had good experiences with it?
Yeah, actually, I had a chance to talk to Frank, so I'm, I'm gonna talk to Upper St. Clair, and I think Bethel Park was.
Collier.
Collier Township too.
Peters has it, I saw. Are you able to, as you've done for Baker Road, based on the residents' request, are you able to do the same for Ironwood? And maybe get a little preliminary study before next month?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Not on Ironwood.
Yeah, I, I think that would, that'd be good. That'd give us a heads up.
Mark just reminded me of one thing here. The technology that we're looking at, actually has camera devices on these units that allow us to actually photograph the car and the speed, so we can literally clock what's happening there. Now, we're not in the
You can use that.
position to issue citations, but we do have a community website. So the intent was, if we have that technology, we could post the, the car and the speed on the, the website so that our neighborhood can see who, who are the culprits.
Self-governing.
If you're gonna ignore it for a period of time.
You might wanna check with a lawyer before you publicly shame people for speeding.
I don't like that at all. Not at all.
The technology's available.
I, I'm just saying, I'm hundred percent against that.
I would be very cautious about, about doing that. Just, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I.
The technology's available. That's, that's why we're investigating.
But you're acting like police.
Even if it's going to knock on their door and saying, hey, we know. It's, it's community policing itself. It's like a neighborhood. So in meeting with them, two recommendations we gave them were speed tables and these signals. That community wishes not to impact all residents with the placement of speed tables. I do think that that's a item that has been installed within Cecil Township. And that causes issues for, or at least surrounding areas that have, have them. And it does impact road maintenance, filing. It does impact every resident that has to travel over those. And this is a situation as I've been described too. It's not every resident that's speeding. It's a select few. And they just don't get it. So they are willing to spend the money to target those few, to point it out to everybody that says, hey, this is an issue in this neighborhood. So the technology's there. If you wanted to shame somebody, either privately or publicly, if it's legal. But it's a, yes, it's a neighborhood that I could award to expend money like this. I think it's necessary or willing to.
It will appear as an agenda item. We're just gonna ask Sean to get us some of that information, like Eric suggested. And then it will appear as an agenda item in December. Thank you.
Does Sean's equipment have the capability of gathering the data that you're looking at, that we could put it back into the neighborhood?
What do you mean, that we could give it to you to put out? I don't think.
Like he's done before. Does it collect the data?
I can actually share it with the board, and then they could decipher what information I could give out, due to the fact that it is police equipment, and we are providing it to the board supervisors for that study. So I could give you a general idea of what speed is occurring, what times. But to give that data and a sheet to you, I can't do that.
But we can generally share with you once it's provided to us.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens' general comments and questions?
Karen Sheridan, fifty-eight North DePauli. I just had one question about the Public Works presentation earlier. Can I ask that now? The sand, the storage of the salt. So when you construct that new building and all the plows are there, is the salt not gonna be there?
Not, not right away.
Okay. So you're gonna have to go back to the old Public Works building when you need to refill and stuff like that.
We'll maintain those.
You think, are you worried about the impact on your time to get out for that, or no?
No, we play it pretty well.
Okay.
We have a forecasted event. We'll load up the night before prior to the event, so that all we're waiting for is the police to notify nine-one-one. I'll get the call and get out. So we're, we're usually sitting there ready with our trucks, so.
Okay.
Once we mobilize into the community, those locations that we currently have, our central producer gentleman that handles the western part of the township, the eastern part of the township. But we normally load prior to an event, where we know it's going.
Okay, thanks. That's it. Thank you.
Catch me again. Dale Delugus, resident of Windsor Woods. I was looking to get, I guess, an update on my favorite topic. What's going on with the dangerous condition at the lower portion of North DePauli? I understood that the township has met with Range and wanted to involve them or include them, whatever's gonna happen there. And in talking to Joe from Gateway, he said that whatever comes about has to come up to the board for a approval of some sort or another. But there was nothing on the agenda for tonight, so. Just looking for an update on where we stand.
Oh, you want to. Bill and Dan, someone?
Sure. So I presented a plan to the board. They had a capital budget meeting that we had a few weeks back. And the whole plan for North DePauli, the completion of it was presented to the board. There's been a number of things done already, as you know. The remaining items to be completed include some storm sor work. There's gotta be some driveway adjustments. We've met with those people on the driveways. We have to get that work done. And then we have to finish the paving. We also need some additional right-of-way off of Desmond. And the plan would be, we presented the budget to the board. We were able to get some additional funding from the developer that was here tonight. And Range is gonna pay for half of it. So the hope is that the board would budget to complete the rest of the work here in the spring of next year.
Okay, well, it hasn't improved, it hasn't gotten any better as far as the trucks passing, other traffic and everything. It's a very tight situation there.
Sure.
The sooner the better, obviously.
I agree.
The township did, a couple days ago, patch some puddles there.
You can thank Mr. Bodnar for that.
And half of those have already plopped back up again, so.
We're working towards it. Thank you.
Bill, will there be cooperation to get that additional right-of-way down at the bottom from the property owner? Does it sound good? I mean, it's just a matter of paperwork?
Yeah. There was a certified veteran sent to the property owner. We're waiting for.
Initial conversations were positive. He had no problem with the township acquiring additional right-of-way.
Alright, at some point, even if we can't do all the paving, because obviously the storm work has to be done first, if we could, the, the plan was to move that road over away from the, the restaurant there. So at some point, can we get the lines painted there, you know, to kind of steer people so they have a better sight? Paint, you know, once we pave over top of it, then you can do the permanent line striping, but couldn't we at least orient them to start moving to the, towards that property, even if we stay on our own right-of-way? Originally, Dan, you thought we might have enough right-of-way to, to make an improvement there. We had like eleven feet or something.
Corner was bigger, yes.
But, but I'm just saying, couldn't we get, get some lines painted now? I mean, if I go down there right now, you think you stay right on the, the worn path, you're right against those steps, and I think that's what people face.
You'd end up sending people into the stone, wouldn't you?
Send it again.
You'd end up pushing people over into the stone, which would be dangerous.
The snow.
The stones.
Oh, no.
Stones into the parking lot.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't, I don't think you could push them now. Could you? I mean.
Bill, didn't Mr. Desmond, about, I guess, close to a year ago, say that he's could have the property, and he didn't want the money for it?
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, why aren't we?
They are. They, they just, we have to send him the formal notification that he has to sign. We have to go through that process.
He hasn't.
We have to follow that process.
We, we've gotten the receipt, yes, that he's read it. We just have to get ahold of him.
Yeah. It's just a formality.
I'm, I'm good at getting easements. I'll take care of it.
Especially from someone we know is gonna do it.
I agree, Ron. There's no.
Yeah, okay. Any, any other, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's what you gotta do.
So Michael DiMatteo, owner of the property, three one three, three one five Valley Road, corner right before Yost Trucking. I had the pleasure of talking to the board back in, I'm sorry, the sixth of July, about flooding issues that all the water shed from all the development upstream, which I understand is gonna be more roads, more sidewalks, and more driveways that will shed water into the Burnside Road stream. Had the ability or the opportunity to meet with Mr. Seitz later on that week in July. Walked him through the issues. Had the unfortunate event, September first, of having additional flooding. That creek spills over its banks routinely. I have some awesome video if anybody would like to see. I was wondering, after that meeting with Mr. Seitz, if there was any further discussion with the board. And he said that he was gonna take it back. There were some ideas that he had kicked around. And then I understand this overlook housing plan with more roads, more sidewalks, and more driveways is going to put, yet again, as I said, more water into that creek, which doesn't impact pretty much anybody other than our property.
Overlook is done. I mean, there's no additional roadways or sidewalks or anything being added in the overlook. So I'm not.
There's different phases, phase?
That phase, that plan is built out. Yeah, so there's no additional, no problem. There's no additional. We accepted roads that were already built. But there's no additional roadways being built there, just for clarification. As far as I understand it, Dan, you wanna jump in at any point? It is still a private property issue, correct?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we, we met, met with Mr. DiMatteo, right?
Yeah.
Your Dom's son.
Correct.
Been a long time.
It has been.
The, I mean, we, we, your property, your property down there, I know your property pretty well. It's low-lying.
It is.
And there, it is at the confluence of both the stream that comes from Burnside and with.
Little brush run, whatever.
Brush run, yes. Thank you. The two streams, streams confluence together. I mean, we, we have had record-setting precedent rains that are, that are unfortunate, but property like yours is affected the most because it's low-lying. And, and I, I didn't, I apologize. Joe did take some notes and, and get it in front of me, and I did not get it back to the board yet. I think that, if I recall, there were some things that needed to be cleaned out along there to kind of improve the capacity a little bit, to get the water to the creek.
Yeah, so right after our property is Yost Trucking.
Yes.
And that is piped with a three-and-a-half-foot round pipe.
Right.
Which is the bottleneck. So it flows underneath our bridge really, really well. The bottleneck is the, the three-and-a-half-foot round pipe that used to handle that stream very well.
Right.
Is that pipe on Yost's property?
It's a private pipe. We don't maintain that pipe.
Yeah.
So.
It runs the length of his property, so his heavy machinery and trucks can go over that. And he uses the rest of the filled-in piped creek area as parking.
So unfortunately, as a board, though, we have no ability to force him to clean out his pipe, that would be, you would have to take some sort of action. If you believe that's where the bottleneck is, and that's what's causing the flooding, then you would have to take some sort of action against him, or have some sort of conversation to ask whoever owns Yost to clean that out. We, as a board, can't force him to do that.
And, and to the best of my knowledge, it's not a fact that it's, it's clogged. It's the fact that it's just overwhelmed with all the upstream flow and all the water shed that came off there. So when I spoke with Joe, he was going to go back and, oh, I'm sorry, over the, the total watershed that came into the creek. Prior to all of the development up Burnside, that property never flooded.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll just answer that with the, the fact that all of the new development that has occurred has holding ponds in place to hold back their additional water. It, it, there's, again, it's this record-setting precedent rains. I mean, in an area where like, I, I don't know, I don't know what we do at those locations that are, we can't change the elevations of. I don't know what we do at those locations that are, we can't change the, the elevations of the land. And, and I mean, even if the pipe was, if you opened up and pulled that pipe out of there from Yost, you still would probably get flooding because the creeks are gonna back up from Brush Run. I mean, it, we're just seeing those, those type of rainfall events, and again, I'm not, I, I, again, let me, let me get a look at the notes that, that Joe had, maybe I can give you some guidance.
That would be great.
If there's something that could be done, but I don't think it's a township issue, I think it's a private, some of what Cindy's pointing out, and I agree with her, it's a private matter.
And just to address your point about the, if they opened up the flow through Yost Pipe, the other creek would flow, or would still back up. When the water does make it to the road, and I have video of it, the water flows really well when it's on the road into the larger Brush Run and the, the steel-grated ridge that, that spans that, so it flows on both sides and it flows really well, but it's, gets bottlenecked right there at the property line.
I did like to, so when you were here in July, we did research, and, and we do have documented proof that flooding has been a problem there before, prior to the overlook, so like, I don't think that this is a new problem that has just come up as, as directly related to the overlook or any sort of development that's come in that area. But I would just encourage you to work with Dan to try to figure out what the best solution is, unfortunately, I don't think there's anything that we can do to, to force a fix, fixing.
Mentioned that, that research that, for prior flooding, is that something that's shareable?
I'm sure, yeah, we could, yeah, I mean-
I'd love to have a look at that.
Yeah, sure, I mean-
I mean, there's no fact, I, I mean, I personally, personally witnessed flooding at that property over the twenty-five years that I've been here, so it's not like it just happened the last five.
No, no, and I'm not blaming it purely on the overlook property, it's all the development that has happened up there. And that's, that's my, I don't have the hard and fast data on that.
Right.
But it's, all the development that's happened, the flooding happens more routinely now.
Yeah, just one question, though, is, uh, he's, he calls it a bottleneck by that Yost Pipe, is it a bottleneck that creates a, just as strictly a surcharge upstream? Or is he also have consequences like it blowing over top and damaging his own property, do you know that?
I think it has a difficulty getting into a pipe, if there's not enough capacity in the pipe that goes under Yost's property, and therefore backs up onto yours. You haven't had any water in your house, or any?
Oh, yeah, there's definitely been water in the basement of that rental property.
The rental property that's closest to there, not up to, your father's house was up high, much higher.
Well, that's a separate issue, and that was, I got the sewer authority, yes, the sewers that are supposed to be sealed have significant infiltration, I have a meeting with the sewer authority and Mr. Joseph for the sewer authority as well. But yes, then you're talking about Brush Run Creek in the back of the house, when it comes through Lucian's, um, bridge tunnel. Uh, fortunately, he and Falcone both have, uh, restrictors on that flow. That helps us out a little bit, but there's a curve in the creek, and it, and it just plows right through the curve in the creek, and it comes into the backyard of all of those houses down there, which overwhelms the sewer, overwhelms, and we have had flooding from there as well.
Okay.
He's probably getting water from Graziani, too, won't he?
Watershed.
Pardon me?
Uh, from the watershed?
Yeah.
From Graziani's.
Rosewood Plan and all.
No, I don't-
I don't think so.
No, I don't think Graziani.
What do you think?
Yeah.
I don't know how far his property is, how, that, that, the development is, but, yeah.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
That'd be awesome, I'll give you.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no more comments or questions from residents, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at eight fifty-four.